Okay, let's find our seats. We're gonna have a nice intimate conversation with District Three's finest. We are videoing through C-Mac. Thank you, C-Mac, for helping us out tonight. So hopefully, is this live on C-Mac? No? Okay. So you can catch it later on. Or you can send folks to watch it. So Pastor Binion is not feeling well tonight, so I am filling in for him with our opening prayer and our welcome. Welcome to Westside Church of God, one of our longstanding anchoring churches here in the west side. And thank you for joining us this evening. My name's Arti Padilla. I am a Southwest resident. In fact, I just live about three minutes away. And Director of Every Neighborhood Partnership, a local nonprofit that does a lot of work here in Fresno, and especially here in southwest Fresno, with our schools and residents in the neighborhoods. So I'm gonna first open up in prayer, and we'll get us going. So let's pray. Father, thank you so much for a beautiful Monday as we entered this fall season. Thank you for this season of civic engagement with the elections coming up. Tonight, we are thankful for the two candidates that have invested their time and their energy to run for this very important seat on the council. Thank you for their hearts. Thank you for the work that they've done for the community in years past, what they do now, and what they will do in the future, Lord. So we are energized by the fact that we have two gentlemen here that will be a future leader in our district and helping us guide the path forward in the years ahead, Lord. So we thank you for that. Just bless our time and allow us to glean your wisdom through our conversation tonight, so that we are better prepared to make our selections on Election Day in November. We love you so much, in Jesus's name. Amen. Okay. So I just wanted to welcome you guys. I'm gonna have my friend Kelsey McVeigh come and share. Our two anchoring hosts are the Fresno Community and Economic Development Partnership and Housing Authority. And Kelsey's gonna share a little bit about the partnership.
Thanks, Arti. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. It's a pleasure to have you here. It's a pleasure to help put this event on. As Arti said, my name's Kelsey McVeigh. I work at Fresno Metro Ministry, and we are the backbone organization of Better Blackstone CDC, which is one of nine CDCs and EDCs here in Fresno. CDCs are community development corporations, and EDCs are economic development associations, economic development corporations. We were convened a couple of years ago through the Housing Authority and Wells Fargo and with some other partners. And we're working on capacity building with a consultant that was brought into town to work with us. And we saw a lot of value working together as a network of neighborhood-based CDCs and EDCs. And so even though that funding has gone away, we have intentionally continued with our relationship building, capacity building, and just discussions of how we can grow ourselves, how we can grow more CDCs and more EDCs in Fresno to really work and do this deep work in these neighborhoods, because we all wanna see safe, healthy, clean, and attractive neighborhoods. So, as I said, I'm with Better Blackstone. Our other members are the Southwest Fresno Development Corporation, St. Rest CDC, Lowell CDC, Highway City CDC, Eldorado Park CDC, Southeast Fresno Economic Development Association, the Jackson Neighborhood CDC, and the Adams CDC. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. And we thank Housing Authority for providing the food and drinks in the fellowship hall. Thank you so much, Housing Authority, for that. So, let's get going. Let me introduce our two moderators that are gonna be helping us out tonight, both from Channel 30 News. First, Graciela Moreno. Let me read a little bio. Ms. Moreno, a Fresno native and alum of CSU Sanaslos, is currently a co-anchor with the weekday editions of ABC 30's editions of Action News at six, excuse me, five, six, and six-thirty. Very busy lady. She is a three-time Emmy Award winner and currently produces and hosts Latino Life, a weekly program on the life and people within our Latino community. Ms. Moreno is an active community member and respected leader amongst her peers. Ms. Moreno joins us as our moderator for tonight's conversation with the District Three Councilmember candidates. Please give a warm welcome to Ms. Graciela Moreno. And second, Taylor Kimber. Ms. Kimber, a Fresno native, is a graduate of the Academy of Arts University in the Bay Area. She is also an assignment editor with ABC 30 and is an active community member here in her hometown. She is a longtime family legacy of service and leadership in the Fresno community. She is a voice for today's millennials. Ms. Kimber will be joining Ms. Moreno as a moderator for this evening's forum. Please welcome Ms. Taylor Kimber.
All right, so I'll be introducing our candidates for District Three City Council, starting with Miguel Arias. Miguel Arias, State Center Community College trustee. Spent his youth as a farmworker in West Fresno County, working to pay his college tuition and learning firsthand the value of hard work. Mr. Arias is a former legislative aide for Congressman Cal Dooley. For the last decade, he has served as an executive in the public education arena, working to improve our public school districts and community colleges and creating a pathway for new generation of leaders. Mr. Arias has earned numerous awards and commendations for his work and leadership. He currently serves as the Chief Information Officer for the Fresno Unified School District and is the State Community College District Trustee. Mr. Arias lives in downtown Fresno with his family. Please welcome Mr. Miguel Arias to the stage. All right, our final candidate is Tate Hill II. Tate Hill has spent, has more than 10 years of experience working in District Three to spur jobs and small business opportunities. He is a community leader with experience in working with residents, business, and government to address community economic development issues in southwest Fresno. Mr. Hill is currently the Senior Manager of Administration at the Access Plus Capital, a subsidiary of Fresno Economic Opportunities Commission, one of the largest community action agencies in the country. Previously, Mr. Hill was the President and CEO of Fresno Metro Black Chamber of Commerce. Through his role at the Black Chamber, he has been an advocate for entrepreneurship and economic growth in the African-American community since 2009. Tate has a Master of Science in Community Economic Development from Southern New Hampshire University and a Bachelor's Degree in Business with an emphasis in finance from the Craig School of Business at CSU Fresno. He is a proud alumna of Edison High in West Fresno. Please welcome Mr. Tate Hill to the stage.
Welcome, everybody. Taylor and I are thrilled to be here representing Channel 30, but also being here as part of, as community members. Our station is in downtown Fresno, so this is an area that obviously affects us personally, and so we're very, very happy to have been invited to be here and to see all of you gathered here today. Especially, you know, we always talk about on the news and everyone out there, when election time comes around, we always talk about the importance of going out there and getting out the vote. As you all know, the primaries, we didn't have a very high voter turnout, and we also found out that particularly in this district, it was crucial. It was crucial. Every single last vote was so, so important. So we're very happy for those of you who came to this meeting today, you know, for your involvement and obviously, hopefully, seeing you out there on Election Day as well, exercising those rights. So before we get started with the questions, let's go ahead and just a couple of rules, get them out of the way. Make sure that everybody's phones have been turned off. Make sure that they're on silent at least. Video recording and live streaming is permitted. And if you do use social media, and we would appreciate if you do, go ahead and use the hashtags on the screen, #District3Fresno, #District3Fresno, and #VoteFresno2008. Do we have a screen behind us? No, we don't. Okay, but that's okay. So #District3Fresno and #VoteFresno2018, so everybody knows that we're all here at this event together today. All right. There will also be, letting you know that there will be a segment where the written questions from the public will be facilitated. It's my understanding that as you were coming in, you were asked if you had a question that you perhaps wanted to be posed to the candidates. And depending on how many of those questions we get and how we are in terms of timing, then we will be asking those questions after we're done with the moderator, or the prepared portion of the question and answer session. The candidates will each have an opportunity for an opening statement, which is gonna be about a minute and a half long. And then they will also get to respond to several questions that we will pose to them, and they will also get about 90 seconds or a minute and a half to respond to each question. And just for the candidates, as you know, as you were probably told, we have some timekeepers here on either side, so that you will be able to see them. And the yellow means you have about 15 seconds. And then when you see the red, that means your time is up. So just finish your thought as quickly as you can, so that we don't have to kill your mics. Okay? Just kidding, we won't do that. But still. All right. And also, of course, I know that I don't need to tell either one of you this, but threats, inflammatory remarks, profanity, personal attacks, or the like will not be tolerated from either of the candidates, as well as from anybody in the public. All right. I think with that, we will go ahead and get started. I know a conversation was had earlier. I don't know if they did rock, paper, scissors or what, but I know that we decided that we were gonna go ahead and start with Mr. Hill. And so go ahead and give us your opening statement, please.
Well, hello, everyone. Oh, wow. Okay. Hello, everyone. We are in a church, so give me a little callback and response. Glad to see everyone here on this afternoon. I appreciate you taking time to engage with us in what I believe is a very important race for the people of District Three. You have the opportunity to help decide who will represent our district, our community, your families, and impacting not only the decisions of the 80,000 people in the district, but the more than half a million people with a billion-dollar budget here in Fresno. And so I appreciate you taking this time. I grew up in West Fresno. I'm a proud product of our community. And one of the things that I learned from many of you here in the audience is about hard work, valuing other people, and making sure that we treat people right. And we have an opportunity, I have an opportunity as your next council member, to make sure that people can feel safe in their neighborhoods, that we ensure that we have economic opportunities, and that we grow our economy. And so I look forward to this conversation.
Good evening, everyone. And thanks for spending all your extra time this evening with us. I think Tate and I have been probably on the 10th through 11th forum the last few months, and I can assure you, they're all well-behaved. We actually like each other quite a bit. It's been a really good journey for both of us. As Tate said, this is a very critical election. Not only have you seen the national implications when people don't vote, but they're also equally important at the local level. I've had the opportunity to grow up in the west side of this district as a kid, picking crops. My first job in Fresno, introduction to Fresno, was as a janitor, the graveyard shift at Smar and Final on G Street. And to be frank with you, not much had changed since then. I was just at G Street the other day at Smar and Final, and the same level of homelessness, if not more, still exists, that existed when I first came to town almost 20 years ago. And I think, you know, I spent the last decade of my life raising about a billion dollars to build new schools and new colleges, including Gaston Middle School and the new campus in West Fresno that we're building across from Gaston. But fundamentally, there's still things that are missing that only the city can provide. The city is responsible for improving our neighborhoods, for public safety, and for jobs that lift everyone up. In the last few years, I've been disappointed in the direction that the city has taken. Instead of focusing on everyday people, they have focused on giving $70 million to the corporations of Amazon, Alta, and The Gap for minimum wage jobs at our expense, at the expense of our future. And that's the conversation we're gonna have tonight.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you to the both of you. And let's go ahead and get started with our first question. And I will direct that to you, Mr. Hill. The city, it's a bit of a two-part question. The City of Fresno recently launched the Rental Housing Improvement Program. That includes internal inspections of rental housing. District Three needs a council member that will champion quality housing as the mutual responsibility of both the resident and, of course, the landlords. So as a council member, quite part of the first question is, what will you do to ensure the success of the program? And how exactly will you measure the success of the Rental Housing Improvement Program?
Thank you. This is a really important question. I first want to commend the city and the advocates, and also some in the industry, for helping to make a bold move for Fresno, for the Valley, to start to address the chronic issues around some of the poor standards in our housing, particularly around slum lords. And so there are, I think, a couple of things that need to be measured. One is looking at the reduction of code enforcement violations. So if we have a reduction in the code enforcement violations, a reduction in the number of units that are in our asset team, that the police department, DA, and so forth have to go after, is definitely a way to measure the success of the rental program. Also, the reduction of Section 8 violations that are managed through the Housing Authority. Also, I think it's important for us to review the project on an annual basis. This is a new program. There are some bugs that still need to be worked out. And so that annual review of looking at the strategies and improving as we go. Think of it like a coaching. You approve your strategies as the game advances. And then third, things like looking at cumulative impacts, like the reduction of lead paint poisoning and those causes of health impacts in our areas. And then the utilization of new programs that the mayor and others are looking at to reduce, to look at private sector funding for rental housing.
All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Arias, same question to you. How would you ensure the success of the Rental Housing Improvement Program? And also, how would you measure it?
Sure. You know, in education, we're very good about measuring whether kids are learning or not. We do interim assessments, annual assessments, and the idea is that you wanna be able to understand where the student is before he engages in the next grade level. And so my first step would be to ask for a one-year assessment of the inspection program. I like to see, you know, where has it been effective and where it hasn't. I've heard already from some individuals that they magically found 11,500 units that they didn't know existed before the inspection program was launched. I would also look to expand the actual inspection program to include motels, condominiums that are privately owned, but in Fresno are primarily owned by absent landlords, and also to include lead testing for all the units. I think families have a right to know whether or not they're getting lead from the source of the water in which they're consuming it, from the point of consumption. I think it's very clear that the city provides really good water from its facilities, but the real challenge is at the point of consumption, especially in our older neighborhoods.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. If I can, Mr. Timekeeper, I'm sorry. Just so you know, your card on the other side isn't yellow, they're white. So we weren't, I couldn't see the, I just wanna make sure that you're able to see the color. Okay. Thank you, though. All right.
They were bad and talented, but...
To the audience, they were, but just making sure that he could see them as well. All right. Question number two, and this time we'll start with you, Mr. Arias. Healthy communities are mixed income and diverse communities. So how will you ensure that District Three has a diverse, mixed-income neighborhoods?
You know, this is actually one of the primary reasons that I engage in this council race. As a college trustee, we are investing nearly $100 million in building a new campus in West Fresno across from Gaston. But unfortunately, our district doesn't control the neighborhood that gets built around the college's systems. In education, we've been spending millions of dollars protecting our schools from the neighborhoods in which they reside because of the historical investment by the City of Fresno. So one of the first steps I would take is really make sure that the developers are held accountable for the promises that they made. Specifically, in the West Fresno campus, they committed to developing mixed-income housing. That includes senior housing, student housing, market rate housing. So we have to be able to hold them accountable for their commitments and for the specific plans that are in place with the city. We would, I would also make sure that the city invests its home funds and its successor agency funds into the development of affordable housing and market rate housing across the city. You know, just last year, the City of Fresno took $15 million from the successor agency, which primarily came from District Three area, and put it into a general fund for the reserve. And that's the kind of the investment that I speak of when I talk about the city's historical failure to really invest in quality neighborhoods. And more importantly, as a city, we have a responsibility to invest in infrastructure. Any developer will tell you that if the city doesn't put in the water, sewer, streets, and lights, and sidewalks, it doesn't pencil out to do market rate and mixed-income housing.
Same question to you. Mixed income and diverse communities, how will you ensure that this happens in District Three?
Well, the diversity part, I think we already as District Three have. I'm really glad that our community and our district is very diverse. But I think there are two ways specifically how you create diverse, mixed-income housing in neighborhoods. One is by helping people increase their family incomes. We know that there's concentrated poverty in South Fresno. And so the first thing is around increasing family incomes. That's one, by utilizing or creating a small, local business contracting ordinance that would increase the utilization of dollars here in our community, making sure people have business and contract opportunities. Then partnering with our education workforce institutions like the Fresno County Office of Education's Carrer Tech High School that I'm on the foundation board for, but also things like State Center and Fresno City's Technology, West Fresno Center, making sure that those are available resources. And then the other part is around increasing housing stocks, supporting the development of neighborhood-based housing nonprofits like the Southwest Fresno CDC, the Lowell CDC, to make sure that they can actually encourage homeownership and quality housing in our neighborhoods, redirect family, city resources towards working with banks to fund community housing, and then incentivize single-family housing through good land use policies like the Southwest Pacific Plan.
If I can expand very quickly on that question, because I know Taylor and I, Taylor, who's a longtime resident of this, of this community, of this neighborhood, we were talking about this question in specific. And she was talking about sometimes the feeling in the community that there is some level of disparity in terms of certain neighborhoods, who gets funding, who doesn't get funding. And when we're talking about diversity, and when we're talking about these mixed-incomes neighborhoods, that's really important, because if we all wanna be on the same page and we wanna, you know, act for the betterment of the community as a whole, do you feel that that is the case? I mean, in your conversations, do you feel like that's true? And if not, and if so, then how would you go about changing that?
Well, the Brookings Institute, Atlantic Newspaper have detailed pretty well the disparities, historical disparities in South Fresno. Understanding those facts, it's looking at how do we redirect resources towards southwest Fresno, that there's equity and the development of that. And you've got to be able to work, I would work, with the other council members and the mayor to make sure that we get our fair and equitable share of resources.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, Graciela, I would say it's a fact. It's a fact that can't be disputed. And from the perspective of, every council member gets a maintenance budget. We know that District Three has much older neighborhoods with a lot more needs that we have than anywhere else in North Fresno, yet we get the exact same amount for maintenance of sidewalks and maintenance of trees. That's inequitable. Secondly, when you look at Amazon, there's 9,000 diesel trucks that will run through our neighborhoods, yet they put it in West Fresno without keeping the resources and the value that would generate here.
All right. Thank you. All right, going on to our next question, and this one will go to you, Mr. Hill, first. In the last year, through your District Three canvassing, we know that you've done, both of you have done a lot of this, what neighborhood assets have you discovered? So please name some of them and describe how you would leverage them in the future. So we're talking about the assets that you discovered in District Three. What are they?
Well, I kinda had a little bit of trouble with the word "discover." Implies that you found something that was already there. And so I recognize that there are assets in our community and that historically have been assets in our community. And as one has lived in the district for more than 30 years, you know, I've seen that one, the number-one asset for the district is, are its people. They're hardworking, they have great family values, they're proud of the neighborhood that they live in, no matter what part of the district that you go to. And they're also motivated for change. And we see that with the level of participation with the TCC plan and process. I would say the other thing is understanding the value of our land. We're right in the heart of our city. We have available and good-quality land. And so seeing that as an asset. And then lastly, is the culture. When I, I describe District Three as the heart and the soul of our city and the Valley. And when you think about the distinguished neighborhoods of like Tower District and Chinatown and West Fresno, the Jefferson and the Lowell areas, those places have culture and character that are the fabric of our city. And once we be able to, are able to share that with everyone, once people know the assets that I see and that you see, then they'll value our community for what it is.
All right. Thank you very much for your response. And the same question to you, Mr. Arias. Talk to us about the neighborhood assets that you've seen, and how would you leverage them?
You know, I would agree with Tate Hill on the assets, the number-one asset being the people that live in District Three. I would just go a little deeper that what I've seen significantly, a huge asset is the youth of our community. We have some of the best and the brightest kids. The kids have developed perseverance and who succeed against so many obstacles that are before them. And in order to take advantage of that asset, we have to take advantage of the opportunities before us, the opportunities that high-speed rail presents, the opportunities that industrial land present. But more importantly, we have to make them part of the decision-making that happens in City Hall and in the community at large. And if we can't, if we can't do that, if we can't create jobs in the education industry and healthcare and telecommunications in District Three, we will lose our best asset that we have, because our youth will go somewhere else and not come back. And we have to be able to reinvest in that youth that we have.
Okay. Your response actually segues into our next question, which is, how do you plan to continually involve District Three residents in the decision-making process in some of the areas? And we have some bullet points here. So you choose the which ones that you feel are important, but land use and development are some that we felt were important, the economic and workforce development, industrial growth and the placement in South Fresno, also the health disparities in our district, and the growth and development of Healthy Neighborhood Association. So how would you involve District Three residents?
You know, if you talk to a lot of District Three residents from the Golden West Planning Committee to Chinatown Committee, the Tower District Design Committee that I'm on, there's such value and expertise in all those resident leaders. And the first thing I would do is appoint them to the Implementation Committee for District Three, so that the next time City Hall wants to plant Amazon or Alta that pollutes our air and doesn't guarantee our folks any jobs and takes future revenue away from our neighborhoods, that they have to go through those leaders. Because they have to be part of the decision-making in the District Implementation Committee. I would also say that for the workforce investment programs, we really have to invest on programs that we know work. And the most effective workforce development program that I've seen is apprenticeship programs, where the students go in, learn a trade, those who didn't pursue college, and come out with a living wage, prevailing wage job that provides a good salary, healthcare, and a pension for their families. And that's how we involve all our community in the decision-making.
Same question to you, Mr. Hill. I won't read the list of bullet points there, but if you can, please tell us, how would you involve District Three residents?
So I think of a number of ways that I would want to specifically engage and involve the district. Is one through civic engagement. I think today is a testament that people want and care about the decisions in their community. And so one, at a district level, is I would create a community advisory council that would create opportunities for the various neighborhoods to interact and engage with not only me, but with each other, and again, leveraging the strengths between neighborhoods. Many times, we find ourselves sharing or fighting for a scarcity of what we think is the $1 versus saying, "We need five." And so leveraging the community in that sense, also making sure that we have appointments on boards and commissions. There hasn't been a person on the planning commission since Cynthia Sterling some years ago. And so making sure that we're represented there. Also, I've talked about, again, engaging at a district-wide level, what I've called the City-West Compact, of engaging the neighborhoods and looking at how do we look at impact investment in our neighborhoods, attracting a billion dollars of private and public investment, and also looking at the strengths and the strategies that have been used in various neighborhoods and how we deploy it throughout the entire district.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. We'll start with you on this next question, and it's about public safety. So describe some innovative ways... So describe some innovative ways that our police department can continue to address both neighborhood safety and build trust between community and police. So addressing neighborhood safety as well as building trust.
So this is what I have seen as the number one issue in District Three. No matter what part of the district you go to, public safety is critical. So I have three prime things that I would want to do. Is one, to develop a department-wide community policing model. Kudos to Captain Salazar and the work that he and other officers and community members like Bringing Broken Neighborhoods Back to Life are doing in Southwest Fresno. But we need to develop that district, City of Fresno-wide with rightsizing the number of patrol officers that we have, changing the funding and performance metrics. If your whole goal is to give tickets, then you see everyone as a ticket. Three is encouraging safety professionals to live in our communities and to also change the culture of the department that sees people as asset. The second thing is to explore alternative, alternative responses to violent crimes like what the City of Richmond and the City of Oakland are doing to help curb retaliation. And then three is to continue to reclaim and grow our neighbor-to-neighbor interactions. That's not something that has to be managed at the city, but to support it through technology, through other organizations, our faith community and our churches that they see our community as a safe place.
All right, thank you. Same question to you, Mr. Arias. So how do we address neighborhood safety and build trust?
You know, I actually grew up wanting to be a police officer like many young kids grew up, wanting to be that, you know, superhero who wears a badge. And what I learned going to school is that policing had become very specialized. It was, you know, you have a unit for this, a unit for that, a unit for this other thing. And that's policing as a practice. We went away from the most innovative approach to policing, which is get to know your neighbors and your residents, get back to the basics. You know, we call that now community policing, which essentially is, you know, have people commit to understanding who lives in the, in the neighborhoods in which they patrol. And we've seen some glimpse of that in Southwest Fresno. We've seen our police officers start a mentoring program at Kirk Elementary. We've seen them engage in prevention programs where they get to play basketball and football with our police officers, fundamentally ensuring that there's positive interactions, that the interactions with policing is just not negative in reaction to a phone call. And there's also more things that we can do around creating a pipeline of diversity. There's no reason why we can't create a pathway for folks who want to be from the neighborhood wanting to be a police officer from high school through community college and our police academy all the way to Fresno PD. But it fundamentally starts with diverse leadership. And I haven't seen that in the City of Fresno. You know, recently we had an opportunity to promote a very diverse group of candidates to deputy chief, and they chose otherwise. So it starts at the top, and it starts with everybody's holding the police accountable for that.
Okay. Next question, also under public safety. Name some social factors that have led to the current public safety issues in District Three. So, and also what are the strategies that we must all be a part of to address these social factors?
You know, the concentration of poverty is like no other in the City of Fresno, especially in some pockets of District Three. The historic de-investment and discriminatory policies have all led to concentration of neighborhoods are extreme, under extreme challenges. Those are the fundamental reasons why we have such high crime rates in certain areas, the de-investment of the city, the discriminatory policies, and the continued attraction of low-income manual labor jobs to one part of the city. I, I tell folks all the time that we all want the amenities that we deserve, safe parks, good schools, clean neighborhoods. And there's also burdens that the city must carry across the city as a whole. We, we need homeless shelters, but we need them across the city. So some of the strategies is getting back to reinvestment into the areas where we create value. We are part of an area that's being revitalized. High-speed rail is coming. You see construction all over the place. Our commercial buildings are going up in value. We need to make sure that that value stays here, that it doesn't get redirected to the city's reserve funds, it doesn't get redirected in, in giving away fees around public safety, parks and streets. The same strategy is that fifty years ago were identified discriminatory. Today, they're labeled as business incentives, but the end resulted the same. Seventy million dollars that we don't have for our current needs, given away to corporations who frankly don't need it.
All right. Thank you very much. And we'll have the same question to you, Mr. Hill.
You know, unfortunately, Southwest Fresno, while it is rich in culture and history and has been the landing pad for most communities here in Fresno, has also been the place where we have a stigma of poverty, of, of lack of economic opportunities. And unfortunately, through some of our land use policies around redlining, where people just could not actually buy a house elsewhere, they were forced there. And also some of the factors that expand outside of the city's scope around federal policies around gang and drug violence within our community. But there are some things specifically I think we as a city can do. One is seeing the people again as an asset. I really don't believe that all answers come through City Hall, but I do believe that collectively we have the answers. I, we, we have the solutions for our community. And when we see people as assets, when we see community as an asset, and we take their experience and knowledge and wisdom and working in their own communities, then we'll begin to address some of these issues and thinking about community first.
Thank you. Let's move on now to economic development. It can be said that our district and its stakeholders have long anticipated their share of the city's revitalization efforts and investment. So we'll start with you this time, Mr. Hill. What actions do you intend to generate significant new businesses and career ladder jobs, upward building jobs in District Three?
So my goal over the next several years is to really recruit a billion dollars of public and private investment into this region through public infrastructure, housing opportunities, and small business growth. When I was President of the Fresno Metro Black Chamber, one of the projects that we worked on with a number of other organizations but just could not get it through was a small, diverse business ordinance that would look at making sure that not only on federal contracts, but all contracts, the city spends hundreds of millions of dollars annually. And most of those jobs and those contracts go outside of the region and the area. And so making sure that those contracts and job opportunities benefit the people of Fresno, of the district and the area. Also, as we incentivize development within this region, that we have ten to fifteen percent of those jobs would actually benefit the people of that community. So for example, in the Amazon project, you're talking about 1,500 jobs, 150 to 200 minimum of those jobs would be earmarked, focused, targeted towards the residents of West Fresno. And I'm currently working on things like that through Access Plus Capital to make sure that small businesses have access to resources.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Arias. What about you? Tell us specific actions that you plan to generate new business and career ladder jobs.
You know, I, I agree with Tate that we need to capture the billion dollars of investment. But I, I would tell you that the billion dollars of investment is already here. At State Center, we passed a $500 million bond, and we're building two colleges in South Fresno. And Fresno Unified, we passed a $225 million bond to, to build new schools. The question becomes, do you have jobs here? And remember, when I got on the State Center Board, the public was pushing us for more vocative programs, more trade jobs, but our contractors weren't hiring local. They were contracting with people in Bakersfield and Visalia and Allee. So the first thing we did was said, if you want our contracts, you hire local. As a result, ninety percent of all the contracts that we have put out have been local companies hiring local folks. Tate's right, Amazon didn't, didn't do that. Amazon and Alta, they got built by people coming in from Arizona and Texas because the city didn't even bother to ask, even though we gave them upwards of 50 million dollars in future fees that otherwise pay for police, fire, parks and streets. I think you start off with leveraging your power. As a city, they have a billion dollars' worth of billable transactions, yet they don't require any banks that they do business with to open a branch in West Fresno. At State Center, we do banks with the local banks, with the condition that they operate banks within our campuses, that they operate locally. You use your buying power that you have to ensure that the local community is served.
All right. Thank you very much. And along these same lines, what specific actions would you take to better prepare the workforce to take advantage of some of the new opportunities that you hope to bring?
You know, in K-12 at Fresno Unified, we have significantly invested more money in vocational programs. We opened up a program at Duncan for heavy truck maintenance. We opened up Petino for innovation and entrepreneurs who want to start small businesses. At State Center, we're building nearly a hundred million dollar campus in West Fresno that's going to be CTE-focused as well as transferable courses. Same thing in Southeast, we're building a 50 million dollar campus for our first responders for police, fire and paramedics. All those are working towards building a better educated and better trained workforce. The challenge is, will they have jobs locally? Will the developers, the city contractors, will the next water and sewage plant be built by local workers? Will the city leverage and exercise their ability, which we have the right to do under the law, to say, more than ten or fifteen percent of the workers should come from here if you're taking our subsidy. More than ten or fifteen should come from here if you're asking us to waive 30 years' worth of fees and sales tax. And then the next month, ask the voters to tax themselves a higher increase to pay for the same things that we gave away. We got to stop selling our future for a short-term gain or a soundbite about jobs that are created but not benefiting our residents.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Same question to you. How would you go about preparing the workforce for these opportunities?
You know, what I think, one thing I first want to say is, you know, thinking about the, the opportunity that the, the community college that's coming to West Fresno, that was voted on by the people of the community. It was the people that voted that said that we want 500 million dollars of, of construction opportunities to create colleges within our community. And it was then organizations like Fresno Metro Black Chamber of Commerce, A. Burke and others that encouraged and advocated for the district to incorporate and put in a small minority business contracting ordinance, to make sure that people had those opportunities that residents had opportunities in Southwest Fresno, that we would not repeat the mistakes of gas to middle school where no one from the community got contracts or jobs from that project. And so making sure that we follow what the people have said, and the people have said through the Southwest Pacific Plan, that we want certain kinds of businesses in our community and working with developers, working with contractors, working with industry to make sure that they have policies and procedures in place and that people are prepared to take advantage of those opportunities. So working with organizations like Voice and the West Fresno Family Resource Center so that our residents are prepared to take advantage of the opportunities.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Let's move on now to fiscal accountability and priorities. Mr. Hill, do you believe that the city's budget ought to budget expenses to meet revenue goals or adjust the revenue goals to meet their spending priorities?
So I believe that the City of Fresno should do proper planning to make sure that it can meet its budget expenses. You know, one of the things that we have sometimes done, and it creates issues for future taxpayers and as voters, is we will put out expenses or budgets based on projected revenues that we always don't necessarily know that are there. And if we think about our, how we individually budget, we individually budget based on income that we know for certain. That's how most of our families do. And so we wouldn't want to make sure that we're fiscally sound, that the promises that we've made to our employees, that we can meet those, the, the promises that we've made to the residents, that we can meet that as far as public safety out of the general budget. But also that we support ways to increase city revenues through our businesses. And that's looking at things as supporting small businesses within our communities, making sure that we put the, the investment in through state and federal resources for development in our communities so that we can grow our revenue streams.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Same question to you, Mr. Arias. So do you believe that the city should budget expenses to meet revenue goals or adjust the revenue goals to meet spending priorities?
I think it's the latter, and let me walk you through why. Every government entity has a budget that is based on revenue, projected and real revenue. But every entity goes out to the public and specifically says, we need more money for this specific reason. In Fresno, we went out to the voters and we said, we need freeways that the state won't fund. Let's pass Measure C. That's what built 168, 41 and 180. We went to voters and asked to save, save the zoo because we didn't have enough revenue for the zoo. Then we went back and said, save the libraries because we want a library in every corner of the county. It's no different for a city government. If the priorities are the people, if you put people before corporations, you will adjust your priorities. It's very hard for me to, to argue that you have to remain within your budget when one day, the mayor will tell you right now that there's no money for parks, but yet he gave away 70 million dollars to corporations over 30 years. They'll tell you there's no money for gang prevention programs, but yet they find money to fund the sister cities in France, Japan, Germany, Italy. I think our money can be better spent funding prevention programs here. So I'm, I'm not going to allow ourselves to be pigeonholed that the pie is only so big because the pie can be readjusted based on your priorities and the community's priorities.
Okay. All right, I think you partially answered my next question that I'm directing to you. And do you believe that there is waste in the city's budget? And if so, cite specific areas where you would reduce that funding.
I think you've heard me talk about Amazon, Alta and the Gap several times. You can't argue that we don't have enough money and therefore we can't do anything that the community wants from replacing their sidewalks to fixing their trees or fixing their sidewalks and, and putting their trees when you give away 30 years' worth of revenue. It's not so much waste, it's missed opportunities. They have given away 30 years of revenue from sales tax and property tax to a trillion-dollar corporation who doesn't frankly need it. My residents in the Tower District in downtown and West Fresno and Century Unified area are living where roads are broken, where the cracks are bigger than you can imagine, where they're asking school districts like Fresno Unified, we paid three and a half million dollars for police officers on campus. City College pays a million dollars to fund police officers. The fax department and buses are paying for police officers. Public utilities is paying for police officers. You can't tell us that we don't have money for public safety, but we have so much money that we can give it away for 30 years. So it, it's not so much that there's waste, but there's missed opportunities. And when they're labeled as business incentives for minimum wage jobs that we otherwise would never incentivize. You would never see a city incentivize farm labor jobs or assembly line jobs. Just because it's Amazon doesn't mean it's worth investing in.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll ask you the same question, Mr. Hill. Is there waste in the city's budget and where would you reduce funding?
So one of the things I always thought was interesting, you know, the, the Valley and Fresno has been studied to death. And it seems like every couple of months, we find a new reason to do another study, another consulting for information that we pretty much already know. We have consultants that tells us, that tell us things that we already know. And I think that's a, a perfect example of, of kind of pushing the process down the road versus actually making the investment, focusing the resources in our communities. And so if, you know, if, if someone asks me, can we do another study on West Fresno about economic development? My philosophy is, we have been studied enough, it's now time for our city to take action.
All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you to the two of you for answering those questions. Now it's the public's opportunity to get to ask some of these questions. Yes, thank you. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you, both of you. Like I said earlier, we asked you folks as you were coming in if you had any questions that you wanted, specific questions you wanted to ask of our candidates today. And Taylor here has a list of some of those questions. We're going to go ahead and hand it over to her so that she can begin asking some of the questions that were, that were posed earlier today.
Did you guys think Grace is going to do all the talking? She works for the news. She talks all the time. She talks all the time. All right, so, can you guys hear me? Okay. The first question, I will start over here. With such a large diverse area downtown, Tower, Southwest, and Central Unified, how will you address all those areas? I'm guessing they want to say, I can't read the handwriting, I'm so sorry, but there you go.
Equitably.
Yep, incredibly.
We address it the same way we address equity in education. We mandated. In education, we are building the same quality of swimming pools, tracks, performance theaters, second gymnasiums at every high school irrespective of what part of town it's in. As we're building a new college campus in West Fresno, the initial idea from some who are pushing for it was renting an eight thousand square foot building across from Medicine. Then, we pushed for a permanent facility. They wanted a ten million dollar facility, while Oakhurst was getting a twenty-five million dollar facility. We pressed for equity. Then, we got to twenty-five. Then, we got to fifty. Now, it's about eighty-seven million dollars. You start by taking a stand and saying, "No more." The next time the city wants to build one more homeless shelter, I'm going to say, "Let's look at other areas. We need homeless shelters up north. We need homeless shelters in the east side." The next time the city wants to do another fulfillment center that brings nine thousand diesel trucks, I'm going to say, "Let's look at northeast and northwest. Let's look across the Blackstone Corridor. Let's look across the whole city." You start by taking leadership positions where you say, "No more." And that's what our board in Fresno Unified, led by Cal Johnson, did to make sure there was equity in facilities. That's what we did at State Center, to make sure there was equity in community campus, college campuses. And, you know, you have to take this stuff serious. Some folks serve on committees to resume build. Others serve to lead. And you start by saying, "No."
Absolutely. With such a large diverse area downtown, Tower, Southwest, and parts of Central Unified, how will you address all those areas equitably?
So, I think that question, the heart of that question is about how do you represent those areas, given that there are a number of different areas. And what I have said is, one, is by making sure that I am engaging with the people. I think for too long, we have said, "People come to City Hall," but we have not brought City Hall to the community. And so, I plan to do just that with that Community Advisory Council, making sure that it's representative of the entire district, that I, on a quarterly base, am engaged and connected within the district, that people actually have opportunities to share their concerns and issues, that they, that Community Advisory Council would then help to develop a district-wide strategy that leverages, again, the strengths and assets of the various neighborhoods, and then push for the equitable allocation of resources, which doesn't mean a seven divide split amongst each district of Fresno, but based on the needs. Also, making sure that each area has a specific plan around land use issues. They're working on the west area now. There's one in Southwest Fresno. The Tower District one has one. It may need to be updated, but make sure we have the mechanisms in place, so there's equitable development and allocation of resources.
All right. Next question. Will you do everything you can to protect our immigrant families in our district and Fresno-wide, such as things you worry cities? And I know that we've talked a lot about that, and it's a huge controversial topic right now as well. So, I will start with Tate.
Thank you for that question. You know, we just had a forum last week with me, Family Avota, and some others, looking at a whole slew of ways that we can support immigrant families. And when you think about District Three and particularly West Fresno, this has been the landing spot for many immigrant families here in the city of Fresno. And so, one, I wholeheartedly believe that as a community and as a country, we need to have a comprehensive immigration reform. Second, that our police department by no means should ever be involved in the federal enforcement of ICE or deportation, that we should make sure that people feel safe in their neighborhood, no matter what their residency status, their zip code, their ethnicity, their race, whatever the ism you want to add to it, that people can feel safe in their neighborhoods, and that, you know, again, that they get access to the same quality of city services. If you're a resident in Southwest Fresno or Tower District or any part of the district, you should get your trash picked up. Your streets should be maintained. When you call the police department, they should respond in a quick and quick answer. And then, when you call City Hall and call for your city council member, that you get a response.
Thank you for the question. My response is a lot simpler. Our response and our interactions with the immigrant community should be that of like any other resident of Fresno. You don't need a citizenship to get a business permit, to pay your taxes, to pay your fines when you park where you're not supposed to. You deserve the equal treatment of City Hall irrespective of your legal status, your resident status, and your LGBT status. This city takes pride in treating certain stakeholders with kid gloves. When the business community is struggling, we do Business 2.0. When the developers are struggling, we reduce fees. When corporations want to look at us for location, we waive revenue for thirty years. Yet, when it's everyday people who employ here, who own and contribute to our community, we somehow find a way to say, "That's the federal government's responsibility. It's not ours." No, it's not the case. We've seen it with this administration. They started with immigrants. Then, they moved to LGBT. Then, they're moving to civil rights. Everybody deserves the safety of city government and the respect and the courtesy and the commitment from the city leaders to stand up on their behalf. And I will do that for every group in the city of Fresno irrespective of what my colleagues or the mayor think.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Arias, starting with you again. What are your thoughts in Fresno's emerging cannabis industry, another controversial topic, I think, to some of us? How will you use the incoming cannabis industry to ensure economic development and economic opportunities for District Three black and brown people?
Thank you. The cannabis regulations are being written. It's going to be the first opportunity to see whether City Hall is ready to move on from its historical discriminatory practices, or whether it's going to go to a place of inclusiveness. And I'm not feeling all that well, hopeful that it's going to be the latter. I'm still seeing a lot of lack of clarity, lack of commitment, a lot of behind-the-scenes negotiations that's leaving the general public out of the process. We have an opportunity to right a historical wrong and ensure that local folks who were, who took the blunt of criminalized marijuana to actually benefit. And what I've seen instead is negotiations with the very few, and regulations are going to require you to be a multimillionaire in order to do business in Fresno. And that's not right for anyone. And that's just one more modern example of the redlining that occurred in the sixties and fifties. And it is going to be incumbent on the next council, and I believe the council member for District Three, to ensure that those rules, if they are inequitable and not inclusive, that they get written before they're enforced.
Mr. Hill, same question.
I appreciate the question. There was actually a workshop this last Monday, I believe, that had an opportunity for people in the community to get some clarity on what the city's current process is, to ask questions and concerns about equity as relates to some of the processes. And so, I think there's a couple of things. One, making sure that people of color, people from low-income communities are disproportionately advantaged in the sale and the distribution and the marketing of cannabis in our community. I have been deeply concerned about the criminalization, the impact that it's had in black and brown communities. And so, you know, I've had a number of conversations with folks of looking at how do we create those equitable circumstances by, one, the utilization of the tax dollars. Right now, we're looking at a ten percent type of fund that would support a number of community issues. I think it should be more than that. The city should also have a focus and a target of the centers or the licenses that would benefit individuals that live in those communities. And then, also that we work to make sure that we have the right kind of distribution of those centers throughout our city and not just in Southwest Fresno.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. Hill, starting with you on this next one. With recent changes to alley garbage, ally garbage pickup in Lowell, excuse me, Lowell and trash day pickup in the city, what is your plan to deal with trash and citywide beauty? I'm sorry, I'm just going to probably shorten this up a little bit, a little bit more. So, I'm guessing they want to know with some of the garbage pickup changes and recent issues with that, you know, beautifying the city, what is your goal maybe considered, is it safe to say, in the Lowell community, since that is in Southwest Fresno District Three?
One of the things that I've heard a lot from Lowell residents, and actually also residents of West Fresno and Tower District, is, one, looking at ways that we can close our alleys. I don't hardly know anyone that wants an open alley. The trash is not picked up there. It becomes the breeding ground for trash, drug use, a whole bunch of other things that impacts the residents. And so, along with actually giving people the paperwork and showing them what is the process of closing alleys within their neighborhoods, I really look at how do we expedite that process to reduce those issues. And then, also, you know, making sure that we are looking and evaluate the, I'm assuming, commercial pickup, because residential pickup is done by the city of Fresno, but commercial pickup, those two contracts that we have within the city of Fresno between Mid Valley and Allied Waste, if I'm understanding the question correctly, and making sure that they're taking care of that. And if there aren't taking care of that, and I have sometimes personally experienced that with groups, is that there be some type of fine or retribution to the resident when that doesn't happen.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
I know, thank you. I think I understood. You know, garbage has been a source, a source subject for me lately. I've had a lot of conversations about the garbage service of the city of Fresno. You should know that first and foremost, the city will have to decide next year if it automatically gives all the garbage contractors another ten-year lease agreement automatically, or whether it puts it out to bid. My position is, we should put it out to bid and address some of these lingering issues that were not resolved the first time around, that the city privatized commercial waste. As a person who lives in a condominium complex, I will tell you, we're considered commercial users, so we don't have the street-side pickup for, you know, used furniture and garbage. So, what we end up seeing as users is, all the apartment complexes also don't have that same opportunity. So, they end up throwing everything into our garbage units, and we get charged for it. I don't understand why the city structured a contract in a way that doesn't treat commercial residents and commercial operations like they would a single-family homeowners, and giving them opportunity to put out their waste and collect it. Instead, it ends up in alleyways. So, from my perspective, I would make a couple of adjustments. One, ensure that condominium complexes and commercial vendors also have the same opportunity to put out their waste outside. Secondly, ensure that the commercial contractors and the garbage companies are responsible for cleaning the alleyways. Right now, it's becoming a responsibility of individual homeowners, even though they're not the ones responsible for the mess.
All right, next question. I'll start with you, Mr. Arias. What are you going to do about parks, streets, area, they specifically said, area parks and streets where the homeless have moved in, especially trash issues? I think we've kind of covered the trash, so maybe let's just focus on what are you going to do about that area or parks and streets? I know, right on G Street, there was a, right by us at ABC 30, there was a camp that set up underneath the underpass, so...
Yeah. You know, I'm a father of two, and I unfortunately have the same experience as many residents, where I have to drive up north to find a clean and safe park for my kids to play in during the week. And our parks got built on landfills. They got built pockets of dirt that didn't fit anything else, and they were called green space. One of the major actions we have to take collectively is pass Measure P, because without the dedicated revenue, without fundamentally fixing the revenue problem, we can't fund our parks, build new ones, nor maintain the ones that have been put out so far. Secondly, we have to address the homeless problem citywide. You know, I just heard of, one of my friends, Luis Chavez, suggests that we should build a homeless shelter in the Provalo House, even though we have one already. Instead of volunteering District Five for a homeless shelter in his area, we have to address homelessness like it's everybody's problem, and it's everybody's solution to be a part of. And I've laid out a plan where we deal with the immediate health and safety needs of our homeless with dignity. Then, we deal with temporary housing and permanent housing. And it can't be one person in the council or one person on the mayor's seat determining where those locations go. It has to be a concerted, concerted community responsibility for it to be citywide, because our homeless are citywide. They're not just in South Fresno.
Mr. Hill?
I would also agree that we need to make sure we have sufficient resources for our parks, particularly in South Fresno, where we have a number of parks that have not been maintained. They don't have sufficient resources. You know, as uncle to nine, you know, when I try to take my nephews and nieces out to the park, I have to watch out for a lot of different things. And so, making sure that our parks are safe, and so, supporting Measure P, also making sure that as developers are creating new multifamily housing, that there is green space and sufficient green space incorporated into those developments there. And then, as it relates to, as it relates to dealing with the options around the homeless, you know, I really believe that we need to leverage the expertise that we have within our community. And so, I've had conversations with the Housing Authority, other housing advocate and organizations, and, you know, understanding that housing for the homeless has a number of issues and challenges. I'm in support of the Steps to Home program, looking at housing and social services, working with our county officials to make sure we have a comprehensive solution. But again, I think this is an example of, we need to leverage the collective skill sets within our community.
Thank you. All right. So, this is directed at both of you guys, and this is, the public did ask this. So, this is a, you can either respond yes or no, give an explanation, however you would like to answer. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Hill. It's, did you accept ten K or any donation from JD Homes Rentals or the owner?
No, I have not received unless they sent it today. I don't, and I just went to my treasurer's office, so I'm pretty sure. I did not receive any monies from JD Homes. I have talked to a number of developers and landlords, because really wanted to understand, you know, their mindset, I believe, as a city council member, getting as much information, even when you may disagree with someone, to understand their mindset and look at ways to find viable solutions. But I've not received any kind of money from JD Homes. I have been the largest single contributor to my campaign, and I've had well over a hundred contributions from, you know, from a few dollars to a larger amount. But, you know, I'm really proud of having a very grassroots campaign and process. Over fifty volunteers that have come out that say, "No, we believe in your message. We want to be a part of your work, and we want to support what you're doing."
Mr. Arias, same question.
The answer is no. And I would say, I also haven't received or accepted money from the Apartment Association that represents JD Homes. So, I will not be accepting any contributions from slum lords or anybody associated to them.
All right, thank you. So, I will start with you, Mr. Arias. With all of the developments... With all of the development scheduled to take place in southwest Fresno, what measures will you take to ensure that residents closest to the construction are included in the labor force, and how we can, and how can we increase our average medium income?
You know, um, as we're building this community college campus in West Fresno, we're actually gonna be pursuing a community benefits agreement or and a and a uh project labor agreement. They're essentially both legal pathways to ensure that we get to determine who gets hired as part of the construction project. This will be the first time for State Center to undertake this kind of initiative, and I mean, it's an initiative that the city of Fresno has never undertaken, even though it has the ability to do so with the high-speed rail and the TCC funds locally. So, um, that's gonna be our way to ensure that local residents are hired for our projects. Um, I'm okay with the project taking two years to build versus eighteen months, if it means our local community is hired and participating in the construction and the benefit of those, of of that project. Um, so those are the kind of things that we'll be doing. Secondly, as a city, um, I won't be supporting any business incentives that don't require local hire, um, nor um does it require mitigation for the pollution that they're gonna create, uh, or any business incentives that fast-tracks the project so that community cannot voice their opinions or or request mitigation. Um, instead, I'm gonna focus on attracting jobs um from the sectors of education, the healthcare industry, and telecommunications, cause those are very well-good paying jobs that include a livable wage, a pension, and healthcare, all of which are not the case in some of these low-income manual labor jobs.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
So, one of the things that I was really glad that we did collectively, the, I think, hundred and sixty-six people that voted as a part of the TCC process right here in this location, is we incorporated things like uh community benefits agreement language, uh, even though it's not exactly what we want it to be, but it's the the start to look at local hiring, minority contracting, making sure that uh the community benefits. We have seen historically our institutions, uh, from State Center, from Fresno Unified, from the city of Fresno, that we have not hired uh contractors and workers that live in our neighborhoods. We've seen it with the expansion of Edison High School, with the building of Gaston, with a number of the projects. And so, one of the things I was glad that the community stood up, and I was glad to uh raise my card along with the others, to say that we want to have these components into the process. And when I'm an employee, when I'm someone that wants a job, when I, when I live in a neighborhood that has, you know, double-digit unemployment, uh, the main thing that I I wanna know is, can I get a job? If it's a project labor agreement, if it's a community benefits agreement, if it's a local hire, I really don't care, but I want that job. And many of the residents in West Fresno deserve those jobs, they have the capability of doing that, and I plan on working with organizations to make sure that they're prepared and that we have the policies in place to make sure that that happens.
Thank you. The last question, we'll start with you. This is a big job, and if elected, you are going to need a support team of organizations, including but not limited to educational institutions, nonprofits, banks, et cetera. How do you intend to change the current level of mistrust that the citizens of District Three have with some of these organizations?
I appreciate the community asking this question, as the community always asks really good questions. Um, you know, this has been the the, how I have worked uh over the last dozen of years or so, uh, in the nonprofit world and working as a small business consultant, working with our elected officials, working with business, working with uh community to find viable solutions, whether it is at the, at the chamber and helping to expand that program, is it now with Access Plus Capital and bringing in and bringing in new dollars uh for small and diverse businesses for District Three specifically? Uh, understanding that we collectively have the answers, I truly do uh believe that. And making sure that we leverage uh the private sector, we leverage the nonprofit community uh sector, and working to make sure that we have uh viable answers for our community. And that happens through engagement, having relationships, to make sure I create wins for District Three. It's not just about uh pontificating on the city council, but making sure I can deliver results for the peop- for the people of District Three.
Mr. Arias?
Um, I have found over the last ten years of working at Fresno Unified and State Center, where, um, you know, Tate's right, Fresno Unified didn't do project labor agreements, nor the State Center for the last fifty years that they've been, a hundred years that they've been in existence, nor did the city of Fresno on their five-hundred-million-dollar project that they just built in southeast Fresno. What I have found is that there's three simple steps. You have to, one, inform everybody, be transparent with information. You shouldn't just be, as city hall insiders, who know that there's a project coming and what the process is to engage. Two is, you have to engage them in the process, um, in the decision-making. Uh, I'm not talking about being on my advisory committee, I'm talking about being on my decision-making committees, because advice only goes so far. And three is, you have to honor their voice. When you ask people to serve in all these positions and come out in the evenings and spend all their extra time on top of their two jobs and their kids and grandkids and homework, and, you know, you have to honor their voice. And too often, I've seen City Hall have a room full of folks and not honor their voice. If if it's North Fresno and they're complaining about cars going through the neighborhood to access a public river, the City Hall responds. If it's South Fresno asking not to bring nine thousand trucks with diesels running through the neighborhood without having us do do the work to build the facility nor to operate it, oh, well, next time. We'll think about it next time. We heard you, but it's it's pro-business, pro-jobs. When it's South Fresno saying, no more liquor stores, cause we have the highest concentration, somehow, we can't get over it's pro-business. So, I, you know, I'm going to keep my word, honor the community voice, and make sure everybody is involved in the decision-making.
Test, 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 yes. All right, thank you, gentlemen, for those. We do have two final questions. I know, don't put your things away yet, I know you thought you were done, and to everybody here, thank you, thank you for sticking around as long as you have. Um, but we would wanna ask both of you, and I think because we started with you, I'm gonna go ahead and start with you, Mr. Arias, on this one. If you would, um, take a moment to ask your opponent a question related to the District Three council seat.
Oh. What's your favorite restaurant? This is how we get along all the time, cause it's, you know, we've been in twelve different forums, and we agree and disagree on many things, so what's your best place to eat?
See, you're gonna give me in trouble with some of my favorite restaurants, cause if I, if I just say Chef Paul's, because they have the best gumbo and fried fish, then I'm gonna be in trouble with Chicken King, you know, and then I gotta go over to Cocky's and have wings and waffles.
Hey, hey, Tate, my question was your favorite. Not the list of all of them.
He did that on purpose, I think. He's making you choose.
Right, right, so, you know, there, I actually, when I think about that, one of the the great assets of District Three, it is, it's food. You know, anybody that could see me know I like to eat. And so, and District Three is a part of it, this food is a part of its uh its culture and the fabric of our culture. And when we began to uh tell people about, you know, where are the places that you really wanna go in Fresno? I I don't tell them River Park, I I don't tell them I like the San Joaquin River, but I tell them about places to eat, right? Those are the things that all of us, I think, can really relate to, and so, um, yeah, so those are all of my favorite places, all of them.
All right, and what question would you have for Mr. Arias? Make it equally tough.
If you had to live in one neighborhood in District Three, what neighborhood would you live in?
That's a good question, I'm gonna take same approach, um, Tate took, which is not answer the question. I've been living in downtown for a decade, cause I have two young children. But, um, as my daughter reminds me all the time, the the place eight hundred square feet isn't big enough for two kids, especially when it's only um two bedrooms and she wants her own room. So, I would say we're gonna transition to Tower District, you know, South Tower, where there's a yard for the dog, um, especially the other three that are forthcoming. And then, we're probably gonna make our way over time in South Tower or in the Century Unified area, cause, you know, um, as an immigrant family, our our parents are gonna remain with us. Uh, once we convince them that they can't live on their own anymore, we're gonna have to find a house with the in-laws in the back, where they can have their own independence, but still be um near us. Um, and so, I I would say, about another ten years of South Tower, if I can find something with the in-laws, if not, somewhere in in the northwest part of the district that has in-laws in the back, cause we're about fifteen years away from um being able to take our parents in.
All right.
We'll have to drag them in, but they'll come.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you for that. And now, we do wanna um give you an opportunity for a closing statement, but we do have a structured question for that closing statement. Um, so here it is, and we will begin with you, Mr. Hill. In closing, if elected for two terms, please describe a thriving District Three under your leadership.
So, how I would describe a thriving District Three is a community of choice. Um, there are already eighty thousand people here that that choose District Three, and I I truly believe that many of them choose District Three. Um, but everybody doesn't know the value uh and understand the value that District Three has, and so, as the elected official, one of my jobs, I think, is to be the number-one cheerleader for District Three. We hear, unfortunately, in the news, sometimes, all the challenges and issues of District Three. Uh, but, uh, there, you know, there's always the the reporting of a shooting by Edison, uh, but they don't tell you about all the AP classes and the facilities and our athletic teams and our children, uh, they don't, they don't tell that story. And so, being able to tell the story of District Three, of of West Fresno, of the Tower District, where people choose to live in this district, where people see District Three as the hub of the Central Valley. We are the urban center of Fresno, uh, Fresno's the urban center of the Central Valley, and so, when people think about uh the city of Fresno, that they think District Three is a choice uh neighborhood. Uh, when they get off a high-speed rail, hopefully in about eight years, uh, that they will live in District Three, that they will eat in District Three, uh, that they will entertain in District Three. And a place that was known for uh poverty and despair will be a place of opportunity.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Mr. Arias, what about you? Please describe a thriving District Three.
I tend to be very specific in my responses, cause I like to see things um and work towards achieving those things. So, for me, uh, in four years, a District Three would look like a campus, a college campus across from Gaston that's completely built out and is top of a hilltop, and it's a beacon to the community of West Fresno, that honors its history and provides ten thousand students the education that they need in their neighborhoods. It's also a place where Chef Paul's and Los Banchos continue to thrive because they weren't gentrified and pushed out with the reinvestment and revitalization of the city. It's also a place where the Tower District doesn't have any more vacant homes for three or four years, they're being, you know, squatted in and burnt because the city's not responding to, you know, the the vacant homes. It's also a place where we have a neighborhood park and a and a dog park in the Tower District that's not underneath the uh underpass of a freeway. Um, and it's also a place where in Century Unified, schools are being built, and the city's coming along and building out the roads to connect to to the nine-nine-nine. So you don't have these huge bottlenecks that only create a further safety concern for our most vulnerable kids as they go to school. It's also a place where, um, in high-speed rail, as as it gets developed, where we also deal with the historical black eye of District Three, which is Motel Drive. I wanna see a place where, in four years, that's torn down completely and is replaced with mixed-income housing, with green space and schools, where where that shameful historical legacy that we have all driven by, walked by, and looked the other way is no longer part of our history in District Three.
Gentlemen, thank you, both of you, very much. Can we please give them a round of applause? Thank you. Thank you to the two of you, we appreciate your time and your responses, and of course, the civility demonstrated here today and always, I'm sure. Um, thank you, on behalf of Taylor and I, thank you very much.